Mike, did you purposely put that flag behind you? I like it.
I did. It's for the pledge.
Oh, that's a good call.
Yes.
I also have one that we can actually share on the screen if you'd like.
There we go. Whatever you want to do, Chris, your Chris gets to run the show. He can put whatever he wants up on.
I don't know about that. Maybe it's not bad to have both.
Okay. Okay, so let's see who else is Kevin Gentry. You're still Scott Rowe. Rosia, you're still Scott Rowe.
How do I become unScott?
Melissa's.
You really want to be?
Melissa, you're Scott Rowe.
You really want to be?
So if you hover over your screen, you'll see.
He has the Zoom app. I think he's working on figuring it out.
Okay. We'll give him a minute. I like Chris's picture up there. It's like he's a foreign correspondent for CNN or something.
Fifteen years ago.
Yes. The scud stud.
I'm on guys.
Okay.
All right, there he is.
Okay, Tony, if you want to change your name from Scott Row to your name, just hover over your picture and there's three dots. There's a menu there and one of the options is rename.
All I have is a pushpin. On my name. On my picture. Looks like a thumbtack.
Yeah, it's a. Well, there's a, are there three dots when you hover over your name, Melissa?
I'm hovering over Scott and there's nothing.
No, not over Scott. Over your screen picture, there should be three dots that pop up.
Top right hand corner.
It's crazy.
Okay. Tony, can you hear us? There he is.
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll get.
Can you hear me?
Yep. All right, if just to make it easier, if you're not speaking, try and remember to mute yourself. And then if you need to speak and for some reason just unmute yourself, I guess would probably be the best way to go. Or if you catch our attention, raise your hand or something. This is, we're going to work our way through this, so. All right, here we go. It is six oh two. I'm going to call and order the regular meeting with closed session for Thursday, April 16th, 2020. This is a virtual meeting using the Zoom technology. Ms. Stock, can you go ahead and take attendance?
Mr. Gentry. Mr. Guerin. Mr. Troy.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
I'm here. Okay, we have a quorum and our first order of business at six oh three, I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda.
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Guerin.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry. Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Yeah.
Okay, we are in closed session, so we're going to exit out of this and we will reconvene in open session. Dr. Rowe, is it at seven o'clock?
He's muted.
Open session will resume at at seven o'clock, yes.
Okay.
Hey, Chris.
Okay.
Hey, are we all here?
Tony's here.
Hey, Tony. All right. Before we start, I want to make sure everybody has changed their name to the appropriate name. Well, that the public can see who it is and who's speaking. All right, here we go. It's seven o'clock. We are out of closed session. We have no action to take. But let's start with a roll call.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Garen.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. Let's see, there's no action to take. Before we get to the next item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, I do want to acknowledge for the public that we're doing this, of course, through Zoom. It's our first remote, fully remote public meeting that we're doing. I want to thank the district, especially Dr. Bzinski and his staff for putting this together and making this technology work for us. So bear with us as we go through the meeting. It's going to be a little different. It's going to be a little slower than usual, but we want to make sure that we get all the all the business done that we need to. So with that, I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all stand, there is a flag behind me. If you have a flag, I see Mr. Troy has a flag near him as well. Okay. Oh, thank you, Dr. Bzinski. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands.
Stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess we'll work we'll work on that for future meetings so that we're all in sync. All right. Next item, number five. And I'm getting some feedback. Is public comment. Do we, Mr. Armstrong, are you here?
I am.
Do we have any public comment?
I will defer to Dr. Bzinski on this one because he's handling the process by which we can take public comments or zoom.
Sure thing. I do see one request for public comment. Listed on my screen as 158 parent.
Okay.
At this point, 1.5158 parent should have ability to address the board.
Okay, sir, sir, or ma'am. Whoever is speaking, our public policy is 2.230. We ask that you identify yourself and the town that you live in. And if you could limit your comments to approximately three minutes, we would appreciate it. Are we having a technical issue?
Are they on mute?
Yes, 158 parent is on mute. If we could unmute them, please.
I believe 158 parent would have to unmute their own device. I don't have access to unmute them from here.
Okay. If the speaker would put their icon or their pointer over their over their screen, there should be three dots that pop up. And you can select that. There's a a menu to unmute before you speak. We can't hear you.
Standby 158 parent. I'm going to try to add you differently to the meeting and see if that clears out the audio problem. 158 parent, can you try your audio now? Seeing no audio input from 158 parent.
Okay, we do want to give that one person a chance to speak. So if we can get that resolved, Dr. Bzinski, if at any time during the meeting, we can go back to this agenda item, and perhaps we could allow that person to make their public comment. Okay, I'm sorry, 158 parent, we can't hear you. And we'll do what we can to get you back on. Okay. With that, we'll move on to revision and adoption of the agenda is Ms. Lombard, do you have a report?
No, I do not.
Dr. Sifter.
No, I do not.
Okay, looks like Mr. Altmeier, you have some things. Is that correct?
Correct. And I also have a recommendation for a specific item, 18.3.2. That's the budget. That is listed as an action item. Historically, we have approved the first draft of the budget, but this budget, based on the crisis and the situation we're in, you know, this is a foundational budget that if we were to pass the budget or create the first draft of the budget just one month ago, it would be very different, or it'd be what you're looking at today. But we know the budget for next year fiscal year 21 is going to be vastly different. The board can approve this budget, but if you just want this as an informational item, because we know directionally, it is wrong. We can do it just as an informational item. So I wanted to note that to the board.
Okay, what I might recommend is that we leave it at 18.3.2, but we'll we won't entertain a motion at that time, and we can at least get the information.
And that works.
And of course, if anybody on the board chooses to make a motion, and if somebody chooses to second it, we will address it at that time. But thank you for raising that that point, Mr. Altmeier.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Zare, do you have an item?
I do not have an update.
Okay, Dr. Bzinski.
No, sorry, I do not.
Okay, looks like we have some community relations. We have some policy. We have building and grounds. On the president's report, I'm going to use 16 to pass that off to Dr. Rowe for superintendent's report. On the president's report, I'm going to use 16 to pass that off to Dr. Rowe for superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Okay. Legislative committee, we could be here like all night talking about all the legislation that's gone in, but we'll deal with that. There will be action items because we did not have a committee of the whole this month. All the action items will have to be addressed individually. And then we'll allow for public comment again. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following revisions. The removal of items seven, eight, 10, and 11, and the addition of the superintendent's report under item 16. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi. All those in favor say aye. Don't forget to unmute.
Aye. Aye.
I heard a couple. Mr. Troy. Okay, are there any names?
Mr. Fleck, before this is approved, I didn't hear item number 12, and I'm not sure Dr. Del Castillo has a report.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Del Castillo, I skipped over that. Do you have a report?
No, I didn't have tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna amend my motion to include the removal of item 12. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi, and that's everybody unmute that's going to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that item carries. Now, let's move back on to where we were. That takes us back to Mr. Altmeier's Chief Financial Officer Treasurer Report.
Thank you. Yeah, I have two things under under the updates, and that would be the monthly fiscal updates as well as the Executive Treasurer's Report, the Financial Executive Summary for the month of February. I will start with the monthly fiscal update. The only thing I think worth noting, you do have the memo in your packet there, is that we did finalize during the month the tax extensions for both Kane and McHenry County. So those did come through. So did want to provide a little information to the board about overall EAV, overall EAV increased to 1.452 billion, which is a 4.79% increase in the overall EAV, which is good. It is $26 million less than the preliminary estimate. So as you remember and recall, every year we do get a preliminary estimate in late fall. And we do analyze that from a new construction standpoint as well as EAV, and it helps us determine what the overall levy, what the board feels comfortable with levying. That did come in $26 million less than the preliminary estimate, which is to be, it happens every year because of folks going to board a review and adjustments being made. We normally see a decrease in new construction from the preliminary estimate, and we did have some good news there. Preliminary estimate came in at 9.13 million, and the new construction actually came in at 9.7 million. So good news there. At the end of the day, the 2019 levy year, 2019 limiting tax rate is 4.589, which is a decrease from last year's 4.687. So I did want to share that with the board. There's a lot of other things going on, as we all know, with this pandemic and crisis, but we're going to talk a lot about that when we go through the budget. So I will hold those comments for when we talk through the budget. You do have in front of you the February 2020 Financial Executive Summary. You know, as of February, well, we continue to track favorably, a little favorably with the overall budget. No, no real, nothing really to report on that end other than health insurance, even in the month of February. It's good to see we had a downtick in the health insurance claims paid from an average of about $800, $825,000 a month to $690,000. So in January, we had about $850,000 worth of claims, and there was a downturn or downtick to about $690,000 in February. And what you're going to see and hear probably over the next several months, and I'll talk a little bit about this when we talk about the budget and the implications that COVID-19 has had and will have on the district. We're also seeing a downturn in health insurance claims for the month of March, and we probably will as well for the month of April, because, well, the fact of the matter is people aren't getting out. They're not going to the doctor. So good news, bad news. Good news, we've seen a downturn in claims. Bad news, people aren't getting to the doctor. And when this all comes to an end, we don't know what our claims are going to look like, because I'm sure people are going to go back for the procedures maybe that they needed to have done, or the testing they needed to have done, or the physicals and whatnot. So we will continue to monitor that, but that will be favorable for this year if we continue to go in the direction we're going with this pandemic. So I will leave it with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any, whether it's on the fiscal memo or the Financial Executive Summary.
Okay, so the only question I have is, so you had those receivables in February. It's now halfway through April. Are you seeing any payments from the state at all?
No, we would have noted that. We have yet to see, not on the categoricals. And so, you know, with the crisis we're going through, the state continues to tell us that they will make the payments for this year, right? They will make the evidence-based funding payments. They'll make the categorical payments. But we also know how severe this crisis is going to be and is currently on the state. So, yeah, I hope they make the payments, and I hope they make them by December 31st of 20. There is always risk that they will miss a categorical payment, and we had the same conversation back in 2008, 9, 10 timeframe.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the risk.
Okay. That's all I would have.
Okay, other comment? All right. Thank you.
You know what? I'm sorry, I am going to ask one more question. And it has to do with O and M. So what are we doing with our janitorial stuff? I mean, I'm assuming these guys don't have to come in anywhere near as often, so I don't know what our contract called for.
Well, why don't, you know, I'll start to answer that question, and Doug, you can feel free to step in. I also have this as part of my financial implications as part of the
Yeah, then just address it then. Don't worry about it right now.
Okay, yeah, and Doug will jump in, but currently they're working, and we have them disinfecting and doing a lot of summer-type projects from high dusting to carpet cleaning. We are trying to keep them busy. They are considered an essential worker, and they wanted to keep their employees busy so that they can keep them on the payroll. And we have been able to keep them pretty busy for now. So I think the risk will be, well, if we continue to go another month or two, the question is, what are we gonna, you know, how long can we keep them busy? But we'll talk a little bit more about that, but that's the gist of what's going on there.
You want me to cover the detail in O and M updates?
Yeah, yeah, just wait.
All right. Well, thank you. Do you have more, Mr. Altmeier, or I kind of got lost on the agenda, so?
No, that would be it for my update.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Moving on. I think we go on to item 13, which is FOIA requests. Is that Ms. Melendi? You're muted.
Hello. Rookie mistake. At 13.1, we have the FOIA requests. It should be right there in the attachment. Any questions? Mr. Armstrong?
You know, I don't see it when I click in.
Yeah, it's there. There's three of them. Can you click on the link, Tony?
Oh, I clicked on the link and my something stopped working, so it's a computer issue. Now it's probably there. Don't worry about it then. Oh, there it is. Now it showed up. I got it.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the FOIA requests? All right, we'll move on to item 14. We've got some policy updates. This is Meyerino Shively.
Hi, good evening. Yes, we have 14.1, some policy updates. Pack a resolution. Changed the policy. Mrs. Wood.
No, but I can take that, Mr. Meyerino.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so two of these I'll tackle, and one of them I'm actually going to pitch over to Mr. Altmeier. The first is an emergency suspension of policy due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This is actually a recommendation coming to us from the Illinois Association of School Boards. It's a bit of a symbolic gesture-type resolution, but also gives us the ability to bypass some of our board policies while following the governor's leadership in the stay-home order in order to run the school district in terms of, whether it be staff assignments or closing of buildings and bypassing some of the normal procedures that we would follow, all while maintaining total transparency and communication with the board. If we should have to follow any of these. So our recommendation is to adopt this ISB, IASB resolution tonight, and you can see that resolution below.
You want me to just jump in?
Well, if there are no questions.
Yeah, sorry.
Then, yeah, absolutely. Are there any questions on that IASB resolution for under 14.1? No? All right, well then, Mr. Altmeier, I'll kick it over to you for the change in policy and the financials.
Thank you, Dr. Rowe. This is a policy for semi-colon 60. And we, you know, we noticed that in reviewing our administrative procedures, that our administrative procedures, which are consistent with state policy, the contract code of state policy, we had some inconsistencies with our policy. So for some of you board members that have been here, well, a long time, 2008, 9, 10 timeframe, you know, we used to have a policy for which any contractor change greater than $10,000 would need to be bid and reviewed, obviously, accordingly with the Board of Education. The state code at the time was 25,000 for pretty much everything, with the exception of repair, maintenance, remodeling, renovation, or construction, construction-type things. And the state code and the policy for those types of items is actually higher. It's $50,000. While our current policy is still reflecting $25,000, and it's inconsistent with our administrative procedure. So we simply want to change the policy to get back in line with the overall state code for contracts, which would be changing this policy for 60 for purchases and contracts, and increasing that to agree with our administrative procedure of the same number. This really impacts, this really does impact operations and maintenance significantly. I mean, I think this, you know, Mr. Rancasic brings everything forward, and we've been bringing everything forward if it's under 25,000, but the state policy on that is 50,000, and it would give us a little flexibility on how much work Mr. Rancasic would have to do, you know, in bidding and things of that nature. Certainly, we're still going to get the best price we possibly can, but it certainly would provide a little more flexibility in the work that he and his team does on a monthly basis.
Okay.
Questions?
Go ahead.
No, I said, are there any questions?
Well, if there are no questions on that, then the third policy change that we're bringing forward is actually a policy recommendation coming to us from our legal counsel, from Jay Greening with Miller-Hell and Triggs. And this policy recommendation grants certain emergency powers to the superintendent given in a state of crisis. So this policy would allow the superintendent to declare a state of emergency in the school district and grant a 14-day window where the administrators would be able to engage in contracts, incur obligations, and employ temporary workers for the functioning of the school district rather than call an emergency meeting or wait a period of time to the next school board meeting. It would just allow flexibility while maintaining and ensuring that transparency and communication with the school board, and ultimately, the community is still intact. Those checks and balances still being in place to ensure that, you know, the best interests of our students remain at the forefront of the decisions, but it would give us flexibility. It's not something that I envisioned having to utilize in this immediate pandemic, because we're kind of already on our way and taking and following the leadership of the governor and the Illinois State Board of Education, but it's a tool for the toolbox that would allow us something in our back pocket, should we ever be faced with a true local emergency where we didn't have that statewide guidance through an event such as we're facing. But again, as you'll notice in there, there are multiple steps in which all board members are communicated with through either the superintendent, him or herself, or through the chain of command in terms of contacting the school board president. Any questions or concerns with this addition being recommended by our council?
I have a question. And maybe I missed it when I read through there, but is it, did you say it's only for 14 days, or is it until, how long? So if we grant you this emergency power, how long do you have that for? Like, for now, like, the governor has, you know, or the mayors have it for, like, till their next board meeting?
This would grant a 14-day window, or when the next school board meeting is held, whichever comes first. If 14 days passes, it does grant the ability to to extend another 14 days or until that board meeting would occur.
Okay, and then what about when we hire, in the event we have to hire a new superintendent? Do we, is there a chance to revisit that policy, or that's a policy, then? That carries, that's just in our books, that's a policy?
It is. It doesn't name a specific person. It names its positions. So so it does not name me specifically. It's the, you know, it's the office.
Okay, thank you.
But it could be something that could be revisited at any point, or so this is something that you're not interested in. That's, of course, on the table in your purview.
I actually think it makes sense, because you're right. We didn't expect this pandemic to happen, and thank God our district is well-prepared, and we've got, you know, administration that we trust. You don't know what's going to happen in the future, so I feel like it's a good insurance-type policy for us.
I've been trying to think of ways to create and give you an example of how you could envision this to be used, but you know, as we come out of this particular situation, I can't imagine that over the course of, say, the next year, the governor is going to to close, say, close schools for the entire state anytime there's a small pocket that pops up. I have to assume that this will revert to local control once we know how to respond and have proper mechanisms in place. So if we had a local outbreak that would cause us to think closing our school district is in the best interest of our students, that might be a situation where locally, we would declare this state of emergency, allow us to operate so we can handle the meals and reassign employees as needed after communication with you, the board, as well as our bargaining units. It's just an example of what I could see as a possibility, but again, it's more a tool for the toolbox than anything else.
Yeah, I have a chance to review this as this was being drafted, and I think it has appropriate checks and balances in it. First of all, the board would probably hold a special meeting as soon as practicable. There is requirement to communicate with the board president and any other member of the board, if the board president is available. A requirement on the regional superintendent, and then there's a requirement to inform all board members of what's happening. And it doesn't have to be a public health issue. It could be a natural disaster or something else that would cause this to happen. So I do like your analogy or your comment that it's another tool in the toolbox. It would only need to be used if it absolutely needs to be used, and if we don't have this and can't use it, that's when we find ourselves in a situation where we're in trouble. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. So we'll move that forward. Are we looking, Scott, Dr. Rowe, I'm sorry, I don't have good handle on the agenda here. Are we going to take action now or is this coming up? I don't think it's coming up.
It comes back up later in the in the agenda.
Okay, there we go. It's in eighteen point six. Thank you. Okay, so this is informational now and we'll be voting on it later on.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, very good. Then we shall move on to, do we have one more or did we get them all?
Ready for building?
Okay, I guess we are. So let's move on to Building and Grounds Committee. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Troy, and you can direct this section, please. We we might, we might have to call an audible here because we're having trouble with your audio, Mr. Troy. So let's go back to let's do O N M updates with Mr. Rancasic fifteen point one.
Thank you. First agenda item there is the O N M updates. We have our solar project. We had our weekly progress meeting today. And I was given news that Square Barn Road Campus and Reed Road Campus are predicted in the neighborhood of thirty days. From now is when we will reach out to commit and request permission to become commercial operational. In the matter of Harmony Road Campus, work continues. But there is one commodity that they need that they are now scrambling around the country to acquire, which is a certain size medium voltage cable, which there is a lot of on that campus, the camp, the cable that goes from the array, the fenced in array to around into the building service areas. They would not give me a predicted date of a commercial operation because they don't have a date for material acquisition at this time. I guess it's a very popular commodity in the in the industry. The high school construction, I'll talk about later. Strategic Energy Management Cohort. There are some attachments at the end of this agenda item memo where the school district, according to the modeling their cohort coach clear results has provided through the one year period of our introduction to the cohort. They tracked normalized performance data for the year against normalized history data, and it determined that we saved in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand kilowatt hours, which in dollars turns into about fifty thousand dollars. And we get a reward for that performance in the form of a check. It's in the record of that is in the end of the packet in the neighborhood of eighty four hundred dollars. I'm sorry, I'm hearing background noise. Am I the only one?
Yeah, no, I heard it too, but I don't know who it's from.
There's somebody that's on that's got Dr. Rowe's name on it, but I know it's not Dr. Rowe because he's over here.
That's actually me. I I joined in via cell phone so that I can get a clear audio.
Okay. Please proceed, Mr. Rancasic.
The next thing I wanted to mention is that we we have been working on bid administration. Right at the beginning of our period of being closed facilities, about a week after that, we opened bids and we actually opened them in the, we opened the door in the bus garage and the bidder stood out in the parking lot, spread pretty far apart, good eight, ten feet apart. And we shouted the numbers out the door as we opened the envelopes, me and two consultants, who were at three tables apart. So and we'll talk about that later. We opened another bid last Tuesday. It was our first electronic bid opening. And all the people that showed up at the prebid mandatory prebid meeting were invited to a preliminary dry run of the electronic bidding process. I asked them at the end of that dry run if they felt comfortable with it. And they said, yes, we actually performed it through a Zoom meeting with the help of Mr. Bazinski's team last Tuesday. One of the bidders was able to join the meeting. But as we then asked the bidders to email their bids to the email inbox that was visible on my shared screen in the special email address inbox that Mr. Bazinski provided, one of the bidders lost his connection. We have not been able to reach back out to him to hear anything positive or negative from him. The other bidders that were participating all felt good about the process, and we'll bring those bids to you next month. But it could be a sign of the future. It seemed like it went well. On the matter of what have we been doing operationally during this period of shelter in place? Our contract cleaning service has deter, they've got a position statement, as does all cleaning contractors in the industry, that they're an essential service because they do provide disinfecting services. What they've been doing is number one, there was at the beginning of the period of closure, there was a very aggressive disinfecting going on and throughout all facilities. Since that time, under the direction of Dr. Rowe's statement that principals will be tracking staff traffic into the buildings to acquire materials they may need for their online education and construction activity, we're tracking in each of the facilities essential things we need, like repairing sprinkler pipes and and certain HVAC items where we've got leaks particularly, not not major problems, just minor things that we can't ignore. We provide that data to the cleaning service, and they have someone each evening that follows those traffic areas and disinfects all the high tech surfaces there, plus every night, all common areas, because we know as people walk through the building to get to their room, they're touching other doors in the facility quite possibly. In addition, we have challenged the service because they said they want to work. They've got a very good SOP for their staff for monitoring illness, what to do if they have illness amongst the ranks, what to do if they work in a facility where it's been identified there are people that have been diagnosed with the virus, which there are none of us, as far as I know. But we've asked them to take the rest of their staff hours and turn that towards doing a summer clean process, which they are doing, but they're not doing it initially. They were not doing it in a team cleaning fashion like they would in the summer mode, but they are now doing that in a team cleaning fashion. I would like you to recognize that that takes ten weeks to do in our one point five million square foot of facilities. When they have the entire crew doing that, except for what's following summer clean, I mean, summer school around. So at this point in time, they're losing a little bit of their staff for providing this additional disinfecting each evening in the facilities, plus following up on every night care for the emergency daycare service and the food service area at Marlowe. And so we're going to be a little beyond ten weeks, eleven, twelve weeks. And we're far away from that date right now. I talked to Mr. Altmeier regularly about what might happen when we get, if this closure extends to the point in time where they do finish the summer clean. I get weekly reports on their progress on the summer clean, so we can track that, and it all seems like it's going very reasonably. As far as our in-house staff, we have staff in at least once a week patrolling all the rooms in the facility to see if there are any problems developing. We have our our campus techs patrolling each mechanical space a minimum of one time a week, and we're doing as much online training as possible on on receiving deliveries. There's a rotation of three people in the office that come in and sort through and and report packages that are received, and our couriers coming in once every two weeks to distribute those packages, plus the inter-office mail that's being picked up by someone else in the administrative staff and brought into the facility and brought into the district office every couple of days. So we're getting all that material back out there so that it can be checked in and packing slips delivered to fiscal for processing invoices. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that because I know there was a question about it.
Yeah, so so it's Tony. So my question is, they're doing the summer cleaning. What are they going to do in the summer? Are we, are we going to be able to save dollars on that? What what's going to happen here?
That is, that is something we'll have to talk about on what we want to do. They normally, I mean, normally, I should say, not that normally, but last summer, I've got plenty of documentation that they they were short many man-hours by way of their certified payroll. We got credit for that. What turns out is that the pay rate they're making, a lot of the people are jumping off the team in the summer and going to work for landscape services, I'm told, and other kinds of businesses where they can make more money. And so they will lose some staff, but we could look to other projects, I suppose, if we wanted to. But if it's at the pleasure of the board that that we look at suspending services, I will warn you that there's a good chance that we will have staff not come back. We've worked very hard for eighteen months with them to see them develop what they've had now consistently for three, three months or so of mostly a full staff. And when what we're finding, even through the hiring process, is if we have downtime between when they're when the service interviews them and they go through the background check, and when they're actually brought into the fold and the working force, they're out there looking around and keeping their eyes and ears open and finding other places to work, and then we lose them. There's been a tremendous amount of turnover. So there's a fear of that. Do we take place? I think we could find things for them to do. We've got, I just heard where there's a good bit of moving to go on in the district. Some of the facilities this summer, they could be part of the painting workforce. We always have grounds improvement projects that beyond what we accomplish every year for like turf burn and erosion control, turf burn from salt, attacking the pavement or damage from snowplow equipment, things that that we could use their assistance on. There's there's possibilities of things that we could find for them to do if we so choose to do that. But we're probably six weeks away or so for reaching that point in time where we're we're at, we're at that point to make that decision.
Okay, so my only, my only point's going to be, I am all for keeping guys employed and all that type of stuff, but I don't, I I mean, I don't want us doing things that are not necessary just to keep people busy. I understand the summer work, all that stuff's necessary. But at some point, you you're running out of work and people aren't utilizing buildings, and how often are you going to clean something that doesn't have a lot of utilization to that degree? So I I'm, all I'm saying is, are we looking at this in the most cost effective manner right now to make sure we're, you know, we're doing what we need to, but we're not necessarily, I mean, it would have been my thought that there would have been some savings going on here over over the last month or so in regards to the lack of people in our buildings. If I could jump in, because, you know, this is something maybe the board isn't aware of. This has become an incredibly huge topic amongst all the school districts in the state, is who do we pay? Who do we keep afloat? Whether it's contract custodial, contract transportation, whether it's food services, outside food services contractors, there are districts all around us that, right, they have contract transportation, outside transportation, they have outside food services, and they're all getting paid. Most school districts are paying their food services companies and paying their transportation companies a reduced rate because they're not paying for fuel and they're not paying for certain other things. But, you know, as guidance from the governor is, you know, to pay a lot of these things, school districts are struggling. And when Doug and I and and the team talked about it, we could have probably significantly reduced the number of services, but then we would have, to be honest, had to deal with maybe even paying them. You know, we treat that group of employees, we really do treat that group of employees like they are our own. We've always done that in the past. We we try to treat them when they're in their buildings like one of our own. And they wanted to continue to work and you know, their organization wanted them to continue to work. And we felt based on the disinfecting and the things that we could do to keep them busy so that we wouldn't lose our future employees, right, that we can keep those employees busy, because if we don't keep them busy, they're probably going to go out and get another job. And then trying to fill that position for which it's already hard to fill, and maybe, who knows, maybe maybe in six months, it's going to be really easy to fill those positions, right? We're thinking the same thing with transportation. It's it's a double edged sword, but what I think the board isn't aware of is school districts across the state are struggling with this decision. And most school districts are paying their outside contracting companies, the big ones, the food services, the contract custodial, as well as transportation, and we we opted to keep them busy during this period of time. Because we knew we had things to do. Yeah, and again, that that's, you you are putting them to productive use, and that's fine. I and I have zero problem with that. I'm 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 looking towards, okay, we've pushed forward work, so I'm just saying, when it gets to July and August, and this is stuff they were normally doing, what what do we envision these people doing? And and would we still want to be? You know, again, we don't know how long this stuff is going, but I I just don't I I it's, it is a double edged sword, and I just don't know that I like the idea of of paying people just for the sake of paying people. You got to get something out of it. So you are right now. That's fine. I agree. So. Yeah, we we know this. It would be, it would be different than Yeah, I mean, so on on our, I mean, I'm going to ask a bad question here. So on our hourly people that would normally be are are we're still paying them, right? Yeah. Like food service people, people like that, that aren't actually doing any work. From the state and the governor, we're paying all of our employees.
Well, I think it's, it's a way out, Tony, and I'll share and share a little bit in my report here in a little while. Our food service people, as you know, just as the example, they're actually doing quite a lot. They're, you know, serving five hundred meals a day.
Right.
So so we found that ways that to to try and and and, you know, put our hourly employees to work to the best of our ability. Are we able to find things for all of them to do to justify a, you know, seven or eight hour workday? No, but we we are, whether it be food service or transportation, utilizing some some of their their work hours to push out some professional learning to them, improve their technology skills, improve some of the the aspects of how they can function in their job when they come back that are in areas that we haven't been able to find time to get them that that opportunity to learn and grow whenever they're doing their job. So we're trying to find some creative ways of doing it, but we are following, you know, the the direction of ISB and and the governor of essentially pay everyone while while we're not in session.
And and that's okay, as long as the state keeps paying us. That's the only thing there. And as long as they are, and they're going to keep to their word on that, that's fine.
Let's cross our fingers.
We have another large service contract, and that is the ground service contract, which that is all outdoor work, and they, our contractor, C T Leach, has a process for social distancing, if you will, of the workforce. They told me some about that, and and outdoor work is 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 plenty, easy to spread out. There is a part of that contract that they're supposed to provide thirty hours a week to assist our in-house grounds person in the care of the athletic fields. If weather turns a little bit better here, we're about at the time where the turf's going to need some nutrients and a little care, and that's going to start up slowly next week. But in the meantime, I've told them this thirty hours a week needs to be repurposed to grounds repairs project that each fall, when I do a final end of season walkthrough to see how they close out and prep our grounds for winter, I always come up with some projects. We spot things for erosion control and and things and in some other turf repairs and in some other creative things to manage other problems on the grounds like places where you have ponding water that we can maybe plant certain things to absorb that into, percolate that into the ground better and things. I've asked them to proceed with working on those projects and documenting the labor portion of those projects towards the hours that were allocated. So we'll have a bank of hours on projects like that that we will consume. I have, I'm very confident that through a year, that'll that'll be absorbed.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is Paul. If there's a high degree of
Um, this is Paul. If there's a high degree of, uh, attrition from, uh, not having the work for the summer people, uh, to do the summer projects, uh, do we have the capability to, or ability to rebid that or try and get a new vendor who can complete the work so we can start the school year full-staffed?
Um, we, there's a notice to cure process, um, that's in there. It takes a total of about, uh, forty-two, forty-two days. Um, I can tell you that, uh, they've, they have completed the work. Uh, there's, they were short hours, but the work got done. After each school was summer cleaned, we do inspect the facility, and if we find any irregularities, we document it and, uh, make them come back before school starts and take care of it. Uh, I can't say that they didn't perform. Did they make it a little harder for us to see that it got done a little bit? Yeah, administratively, um, but, um, I don't feel that that is gonna solve the problem, uh, as much as, uh, we're gonna have to when this contract expires. Uh, we're gonna have to face the fact that, um, uh, if we don't renew and we, we've determined to extend that contract, uh, the hourly rate that, uh, our contract allows us to pay the, the, the lesser paid employee in the workforce will be eclipsed by the prevailing wage rate. It's required by this, I mean, the minimum wage rate that's required by the state, so we're gonna be forced to bid that in about, uh, we're actually, actually, uh, in about twelve months is when this bid spec should be released.
Well, my, my concern is more so for the, for the upcoming school year. If, uh, i- if we don't have, if we don't engage them to do the work because it's already been done, and like you said, the workforce steps away to take other jobs during the summer that, that are paying, what recourse or what, what ability do we have to start the school year with a full staff? If that, that company doesn't have the workforce to fulfill the needs for the school year if we open the schools on time?
Um, during the last eighteen months, when they have been short-staffed, they've creatively figured out how to use internal overtime, uh, to get the job done.
Okay.
Um, uh, and we do have regular quality control inspections of their performance all year, all school year long. Um, I've been told that we're a little more aggressive than most and uh, some contractors can't believe it, and I've told them that that's the only way we can hold them accountable, and when their workforce knows they're being watched, they always perform better. Uh, so we require in the contract that the contractor does quality control inspections. We have our own day custodians do quality control inspections. Uh, Kevin and I periodically take turns inspecting facilities too. And so they know they're, they know they're being watched. Um, and what I've learned about this business, when I used to have my own staff especially, is what's truly amazing, and, and I learned this in construction years ago as well, is that you can put five people in a room and tell them to hang a hundred sheets of drywall, or you, as an example, or you could take three people in the same room and tell them they want it done the same amount of time and it's gonna get done. Um, uh, the reality is they will get the job done. It's just a little harder. There might be a couple real minor corners cut um, that aren't very visible, um, possibly if you, if you reduce too much staff, but I haven't seen that necessarily being the case. There have been a few complaints through the year, but every time we've spotted deficiencies, I will tell you that, uh, they've been addressed. Uh, there've been a few, we had to cite them two or three times before they got it right. I haven't had school administrators calling me to tell, tell them the facilities are in terrible shape at this point, so I, I'm, you know, that's, that's kinda where I'm at.
Yeah, I, I'm just worried about having a number of people leave. Let's say we need forty, forty people on the staff to open the schools or, or get everything finalized before school opens, and if, if so many people leave from that firm where they have twenty people, um, how do we begin a school year with twenty people doing custodial work for an entire district? So it, I'm, I'm thinking more ahead, not, not in current day, but like you said, if we, if we don't have the work to so, to allow them to, to continue to labor away, um, we run the risk of having those people leave for other jobs. And, and so I worry that there might not be enough time to, to hire people in place for a school year, um, much less if we have to, I, I don't even know what the process would be to try and rebid something to ensure that we do have uh, full coverage like what we need.
Well, let me, let me, let me take a stab at this, and I, and I think, I'm not as concerned, Mr. Troy, because, um, what, what is about to, what is about to, if the governor takes additional action beyond April thirtieth, um, if that happens, we're going to have ninety-six hundred students that are gonna want to come back into our buildings at some point and collect their things. Uh, and when that happens, it's going to create a whole lot of work again for our, our custodial crews to go back in and, and reclaim the place. Um, and then if the possibility, if we are allowed to, to have summer school, um, that creates some, some additional work. So I think that there is a, there are a few dominoes that, that we're expecting to fall in the next, in the next couple of weeks, um, that will generate enough work to keep them busy enough. They won't lose their employees, I'm hope, I'm hoping at least.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, I think we've covered that one pretty well. Um, sure, Rukasik.
Um, I'm looking down, let's see if there's anything else to point out at this time. Uh, one, one last important thing. In the packet, you'll see a draft of, uh, RFP for guaranteed energy savings contract. Uh, this is the avenue we used to successfully procure lighting retrofit the last time after we tried conventional bid and spec and failed, uh, years ago and, uh, when we completed, uh, half of our school district light victory retrofits in two thousand fourteen. Uh, this is the same RFP model, and it would take, uh, this is, uh, done in response to the fact we received notice on the uh, ISB school maintenance grant approval, uh, matching grant, and, uh, on, uh, if you look in the, the board packet, there, starting on page three, there's a draft of the document where we cite, uh, our three lowest performing energy star buildings would have this retrofit go on to convert the fluorescent fixtures to LED. Um, and in addition, something we learned through our cohort, uh, our strategic energy management cohort is that, uh, there's a natural gas savings initiative that we can get incentive dollars to help fund. Um, if we would put some simple controls in the kitchen, uh, range exhausts at all, look at the big commercial kitchen hoods in all eight schools. Um, it's, and I've checked the code on this. I was a kinda shocked because we, I suggested this as an opportunity in the last RFP went out and the contractors who submitted the ESCOs that submitted a proposal at that time read that to replace the entire uh, kitchen makeup air system, when in fact, uh, according to, uh, the engineers and our cohort coaches team, all we need to do is integrate a couple simple controls on a contact or dinner, interrupt the control of the equipment, and we could achieve the same goal, and we'll get some incentive dollars to help pay for it. Um, I would like to release this as soon as possible. Uh, we should, uh, recognize, we should have this project done uh, no later than the end of next summer to, uh, get our grant funds. And the contractors that do this kinda work, uh, with lighting retrofit, that will probably come in and ultimately do the work will be the same kind that we received back in two thousand fourteen, who are versed in doing this kinda work in the middle of the night. That's what they do for a living. Um, so, um, I have no reservations about seeing this project delivered after we go through the process of evaluating proposals. I'd like to release it unless there's a concern by any of the board members.
Any, there any, any questions from the committee or the board?
I, I have none.
No.
Do you need us to take an action on this now, Ben?
No, no, this is just a consensus I asked for because the endeavor that this, that will follow, as Paul, you know from sitting on the committee when we evaluated the solar. Um, there's quite of investment of time. Uh, we have to post this on the capital development aboard a bulletin site. We have to, uh, you know, walk all, uh, people that wanna provide a proposal through the facilities. Um, and they get thirty days to put their proposals together, and then we have to evaluate the proposals and come to a, a consensus on, on who we wanna recommend and, and I'd just like to hear that the board's comfortable with going forward with this before they invest that voluminous amount of time and some money for advertising and things.
I don't hear any objections from anybody or, or any, um, any concerns. Uh, please voice them if you have it though now. Okay, here are none. I guess, uh, that there's your consensus, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, uh, moving ahead, uh, item, anything else on fifteen-one?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll move ahead to fifteen-two on the, uh, high school addition update.
Okay, folks, this project has not stopped at all. It's going full bore. I will tell you that, um, the kind of work that's going on in the facility, uh, there are workers that are not working, uh, very close together at all. It's, uh, in, in, in terms of some of the construction we've done, it's, uh, pretty much a smaller project. Probably the most, uh, closest vicinity activity that's gonna take place is taking place outdoors as soon as the weather break next week. Uh, last week, they started for a few days putting the exterior brick veneer on the black box on the south side. Um, so unfortunately, you can't see it from Harvey Road. Uh, but they're turning the corner and they're gonna be working their way along the east elevation to the north. Uh, and that brick veneer will be on, uh, the roof is already on. A lot of the, all of, all the interior walls are painted. Um, the ceiling in the black box gets sprayed black after all the conduit mechanical equipment is fully installed, which we're very close to being at that point now. Um, and, um, we're talking about, uh, uh, putting the ceiling tile in and laying the carpet before the end of the month, and they banned, uh, room expansion area in the corridor, uh, next to it. So we're, we're progressing very well there. Um, there's some, we've reached some important goals of completing the fire alarm, uh, system replacement. Uh, we're actually, we were somewhat fortunate because it didn't turn into a that easy of a project. The contractor took about two weeks to replace the equipment and then test all the equipment to make sure it was fully functional, uh, verify that. Um, in a, in attached, as always in this agenda item, uh, I think it's page two, which my computer doesn't wanna open today. Um, it, I do have the usual lamp sheet that talks about the, the project costs. And, um, uh, overall, um, we're tracking, uh, just a, just a very little bit higher uh, on the overall committed cost to date, but that, which includes allowances. Um, and the lamp is saying that they think that the allowances are still such that we're under, uh, their, uh, predicted, uh, current contract cost back when, with all the allowances included after we awarded all the bids. So we're, we're tracking fairly close overall. Um, I have included also, um, as I've done now for the last three months, some of the smaller uh, change orders that I've signed off on as the board has given me that authority early on lamp, scrutinize it, their consultant scrutinizes and scrutinizes it, and the architect scrutinizes these things to make sure these are all fair and reasonable prices for these minor adjustments. But, uh, we're still well within our allowance range. Next month, I will bring you a sheet where I summarize all these expenses that have been coming through. Uh, so you can see, uh, those things, uh, in summary form. I just worked with lamp to get it mostly completed in the last couple of days. Be happy to answer any questions.
If there's any questions.
Yeah, you may have, you may have covered this. Um, with, uh, with this, with the stay-in-place order, are you finding that, um, that is helping or hurting the schedule? I know that we're close to being on track, but is it, are, are we making up time? Are we slowing down?
Um, actually, um, as far as completing work in the facility, it's, uh, probably helped to have the building vacant. Uh, for example, uh, we've been able to get in the gym and paint all of the conduit that we had to run when we ran electric service extension uh, from more of the core of the facility through the gym, through the performing arts center ceiling and into the other area. Contractors that have to run low voltage cable from the, uh, MDF room in the core of the facility all the way out to the addition for things like the new IDF room and, uh, low voltage digital security systems and things. Um, they've been able to get that work done. It would have been a lot more challenging. Uh, we've actually been able to open up some additional spaces in the music wing there, the fine arts wing, with the old band storage spaces, which are gonna be repurposed, uh, to other spaces and cut, cut door frames in and uh, work in there a little bit too. So I, I think it's been very beneficial, uh, for the project. Um, there's a couple of minor details that are still being, uh, bandied about in submittal form that on a normal project, I think would have been approved and moved forward. They're holding back completion of that, uh, hallway that goes down to the south vestibule right now. Um, but everything else is, uh, I think, uh, uh, compared to where we would have been if school would have been session, we're, we're ahead. I will tell you there was one contractor who made an announcement that, uh, they were not going to be working for a couple weeks uh, when this thing first got announced, the shelter in place. I've heard no other concerns from lamp about this. Uh, it seems like contractors are anxious to, the workers are anxious to work actually, but they seem to be working apart, you know, and that, not in, uh, close groups. Um, on one of our, um, I can't remember what it is because some other little maintenance projects we're working on. Uh, oh, actually, it's, um, oh my, a sheet metal manufacturer on the bid we just awarded for the, uh, through all flashing replacement uh, for some through all flashing repairs at Heinemann and, uh, Martin. Uh, he's been working on submittals with me and, uh, just got through the approval process and was placing the orders for materials so he could uh, look at when he could do the work. And, uh, he called me and told me that the manufacturer that, that, uh, that manufactures the sheet metal stock with that, uh, that good, uh, coating, uh, finish on it, that long life finish on it that we spec, they shut down their plant for two weeks. So that materials, uh, hold back, but I, we've had, uh, we've had some internal parts orders for repair part, plumbing repair parts that actually were lost in UPS's, uh, backlog of, uh, shipping because, and we've had some major challenges with, uh, coordination of receipt of goods. Um, I don't envy people in the shipping industry right now because, uh, they're having to make, uh, phone call contacts with people like us to coordinate, uh, meeting them to receive the goods. Um, and, uh, that's become a, a little bit of a challenge, but overall in this project, I, I don't think it's had significant notable effect.
All right, well, thank you. Let's see. I think that concludes, uh, item fifteen. Is that correct, Mr. Troy?
That is indeed correct. It's over to you for number sixteen.
Okay, I'll start with the president's report. I'll be brief, cause then I'll turn it over to Dr. Rowe. Um, and I don't wanna sound like a broken record because we've all heard this for about, I don't even know, know how long we've been in place here, over about, about a month, I guess, but, um, I, I do, uh, on behalf of the board, want to extend uh, heartfelt thanks to the administration, to the teachers, um, and to, to the rest of the staff that, uh, have done an incredible job of, of adjusting. Um, we've, uh, some of us have had a chance to talk to other school boards, um, through I A S B and other, other methods. Here, so, heard some other things about what other districts are doing. And everybody is trying to get, find their way, but from what I've heard and what I've seen, I really must say that we are doing a fantastic job compared to a lot of districts on, on moving forward and keeping the operations of the district going, keeping the public involved. Um, thanking the, uh, I wanna thank the parents also for doing what they do to make sure that the students, uh, have the resources they need to be able to, to learn. So, um, thank you to everybody on that. Um, but I, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Rowe at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fleck. Um, well, from, from my report tonight, I wanna give you a little bit of an overview of, of what's been going on, some of the specific things that, uh, some of the celebrations and some of the, a few of the frustrations that we've dealt with, um, as we've kinda navigated through this crisis. Um, and we've completed our fourth week of remote learning, and we're continuing to come to grips with this, with our new normal. There are many celebrations in our school districts, and of course, those first frustrations, as I mentioned. Our teachers and support staff have answered the call to help. Bottom line. Um, I've been impressed with the way our teachers have handled this situation. Their focus has remained squarely on the needs of our students, which is all that we can ask of them. Our food service team continues to provide meals to families through our Marlow drive-through each day. We've seen an increase in the need as the weeks have progressed. We're now serving over five hundred breakfasts and five hundred lunches each day. Approximately eighty-five of those meals are being delivered to families who are unable to make it tomorrow for a pickup. Our technology department has answered the call as well, handling chrome books, chromo repairs and, and replacements. They're making deliveries to families, um, who are in need and unable to stop. They're making deliveries to families who are in need and unable to stop by the admin building for that technical assistance. We've also entered into a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Carpentersville. To provide free daycare to our first responders and Northwestern Huntley Hospital employees to ease the burden that they face in the front lines. We're currently in the process of expanding this to essential businesses such as grocery store employees, trying to help them in their time of need. This is a hundred percent free of, of cost to them through, through financial support that Boys and Girls Club gets from the Illinois State Board of Education. Our focus has begun to shift now on what lies ahead, you know, now that we're have a good grasp on the day, day to day of remote learning. Well, we're reflecting on how we can improve our current practices in the event we have to shift to remote learning again in the future. Which is a distinct possibility until a vaccine is readily available. I think the concept of an e-learning snow day seems very easy to everyone now. We probably have, have had our last snow day in District one fifty-eight. Special education remains one of the, the most challenging aspects of serving our students. Commit commendation or warranted to Dr. Dolpa Steele and her team. They've done an excellent job. It's been probably the heaviest lift of anything that we've done so far. But they've led with grace and had a steadfast focus on helping our immediate students. The special services team of teachers have also answered the call and are serving our students to the very best of their ability. Services are coming through ongoing communication with families and an understanding that we're doing the best that we can to serve their children. As Mr. Altmeier is going to highlight a little bit later in his, in his budget address. My primary concern moving forward will be our, the financial impact that this will have on our school district. We've been working closely with our advocacy groups, with our financial partners, as well as our state legislators. To keep a pulse on the, the expected impact that we can have so we can properly plan. And I'll let Mr. Altmeier go into more detail about that a little bit later. And finally, I want to offer a commendation to, to HESPA and to HEA for their partnership during this crisis. Both of our representative organizations have participated openly and collaboratively in support of our students and serving our community. Not all districts around the state can, and their unions are collaborating the way that we have, and I'm really proud and grateful for that. And then finally, we're proud to serve our community in this time of need and I'm grateful for the heroes who have emerged in the name of students and their families. I, I couldn't ask for a better response from the school district than our employees. And the burden that we've placed on parents shifting that, the instruction to the home. And I've said a few times in some of these calls, I would much rather teach other people's kids than my own, and I know that a lot of our parents are facing that. That same challenge. It, it brings some tense moments to the home and we, we know that intimately and we're so appreciative of the partnership. And the, the challenge that Dave answered in, in supporting learning through this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rowe. Okay. Move on to legislative updates. And I can be brief on this because the last House bill that was presented. Was March thirteenth and the last Senate bill that was presented was March twelfth. So there isn't a lot of traditional. Legislation going on down in Springfield because they've kind of shut everything down, but what we have been. Dealing with is numerous executive orders from the governor relating to the COVID nineteen pandemic. A lot that has affected the school districts. I won't repeat what those are there, but they are available on the Illinois Department of Public Health website. Under the governor's executive orders. And I, I think it's important for the public to know that a lot of what we need to do is being driven by the state. And we, we need to comply with those orders. We need to do what is required. To, to get through this. So it's, it's placed some burden on us as a district to be able to deal with it, but it also makes a lot of sense. I think my personal opinion is a lot of these executive orders are necessary and proper for what we're trying to do. So as we go forward, the legislative updates may look a lot like, like future executive orders in the meantime, because. I think that Springfield won't be open for business for traditional legislation, probably for a few months. Is, is that what you've heard, Ms. Melendi?
Yes. Yeah, that's correct. Um, if, if they do meet. It, it most likely won't be until the summer and they'll go back on an emergency type basis where they'll go back and discuss. You know, things of importance like the budget, which is, is totally being re. Redone right now. There's going to be a total overhaul of the, the new budget, obviously. So.
Sure. Yeah. And I think we may hear, hear more about that as we get through the agenda. So thank you. Okay, now to, we've got a lot of action items because there is no consent agenda. So we'll, we'll try and get through this as, as best we can. All of these are going to be roll call votes. So be prepared to unmute as we go through and. Make motions, have seconds and do the roll call. So starting with item eighteen point one, meeting minutes, we got meeting minutes from March nineteenth. Is there any questions, comments, revisions to those minutes? If not, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. So I'm going to give Mr. Garen that one. I'm not sure who that was. So this one is a voice call. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Moving on to eighteen point two point one, HR personnel. I'd like to make a motion to present the personnel, to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry. Questions, comments? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Okay, that motion carries and forgive me if I get lost in the agenda here. Eighteen point two point two, which is a memorandum of understanding with HEA for remote learning. I think we've all had a chance to take a look at this. I'd like to make, like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as presented.
Second.
And I'll give that to Mr. Gentry. Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Okay, that motion carries. Eighteen point two point three is a family engagement liaison job description. Mr. Zare, do you have any comments that you'd like to make on this?
There's nothing to add. This is just a general job description that we got going for a position that we're introducing for next year that we hadn't had before.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the job description for family engagement liaison as presented. Second?
Second.
Oh, that's Mr. Garen, wasn't it? Okay. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next one is the Assistant Director for Special Services job description. Mr. Zare, anything on this one?
And this is just the position from the restructure of the Special Education Department and shows what those responsibilities will be moving forward.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the job description as presented.
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Eighteen point two point five is the HESPA memorandum of understanding for remote learning. I think we've all had a chance to look at that as well. Any questions or comments? There being none, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you to HESPA and HEA for those memorandum of understanding. Moving on to eighteen point three, Finance Committee, we have the payables. We've all had a chance to review those as well. I'd like to make a motion to approve the payables for purchase orders, accounts payable. Impressed checks and disbursements as presented.
Second.
Second for Mr. Quagliano, was that right?
Correct.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino? Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Okay, that motion carries. Eighteen point three point two, this is the fiscal year twenty-one budget draft one. Mr. Altmeier?
Thank you very much. You know, normally at this time I would tell you that I am absolutely pleased to present you draft one of the budget. Yeah, I'm really not. It, it takes a little tone after going through the crisis and the pandemic that we're currently in. I, I have a brief presentation that is going to help walk us through some of the financial implications of the pandemic. It's going to walk us through the starting point for the budget, which is the intent of the draft, one of the budget. And so I'm going to share my screen right now if all works appropriately. And. There, hopefully everybody sees the cover page and we'll move through this. So what am I going to cover at a very high level? You know, I do want to take, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes here just to, to walk everybody through. Draft one of the budgets so that we do understand. Kind of the foundation of, of where we're starting and, and frankly, where we would have been if none of this ever took place just one month ago. We'll talk through the financial implications for the pandemic, current year financial implications as well as next year. And then we'll talk about next steps and where do we, where do we go from here? Okay? As a reminder, I want to, I do want to go through the assumptions. It'll give you a baseline of, of understanding the budget process moving forward. But before I go through the assumptions, please know that obviously there are financial future implications that are going to materially impact. Our district's financial positions, right? The assumptions here and the budget that I'm about to present represents where we left off last year with some material. I say material modifications to property taxes, which we'll, we'll cover with CPI as well as new construction. Salaries, the most recent headcount reductions that the board approved just a month or so ago. And capital projects primarily the addition of the, the, the approval of the eighteen buses, the fourteen propane and the four wheelchair buses. So this is where, again, where we would have been just one month ago. From a key assumption standpoint, what's important to know here is the budget for next year, FY twenty-one budget. Is pretty much locked and loaded when it comes to property taxes. So CPI, we just approved CPI levy year at one point nine percent. And next year's levy, two thousand and twenty levy has already been determined at two point three percent. So that's good news. New construction for the current year, two thousand and nineteen levy is already, as, as I previously communicated. That's a done number. That's nine point seven million dollars. And the one assumption, the one estimate that we currently have in the system is twelve million dollars for next year's two thousand and twenty levy. State revenues, as they have for the last three, four years, increased by six hundred and seventy-five thousand. That is in accordance with the evidence-based formula if the state sets aside three hundred, three hundred and fifty million dollars. On the expenses side, yes, we have not finished our, our collective bargaining with HEA. So our salaries do reflect the current collective bargaining, bargaining agreements as well as the most recent reductions in headcount, which I previously noted. Health insurance is budgeted to increase five percent. Workman's comp and property and liability is increasing five percent. We always adjust that to actual, those do go up and down. And capital expenditures within this budget, okay, draft one of the budget. Is an increase over prior year's capital expenditures by six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And that is one hundred percent due to the additional buses. That we are budgeting for because we do have, we do have a pretty large fund balance and we've got, we've got a pretty big fleet that we need to take care of. So those are the major assumptions that drive eighty, ninety percent of the direction of the district. Looking at, you know, the really big picture from an operating revenue standpoint, if you look to the column to the far right FY twenty-one budget. Right? That, that reflects CPI locked and loaded with new construction at nine point seven million and twelve million. It reflects the additional six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the state of Illinois for the evidence-based funding formula. On the expense side, right, as, as the HESPA contract in there has HEA continuing at three point five percent. Big picture, it puts us at an operating deficit of two hundred and seventy, approximately two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Now, that's expected because we knew we were going to dip into the transportation fund balance by six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So without the additional buses that we, the administration recommended and the board approved. Without those additional buses, we would have been looking at an operating surplus of about four hundred thousand dollars. So that's really big picture is to draft one of the budget that, that we just need to all kind of be aware of because things, well, things are gonna, things are going to change. But it is our starting point. So. Now let's jump into current reality, right, and financial implications. I do have a chart in your, in your budget memo. There is, I believe on page two or page three, there's a big chart, but I've, I've got them embedded here in my presentation. But before we jump into that. You know, I want to try, I want, I want to talk about a few things, right? I think we all understand that within the budget process, we, we have to remain, you know, vigilant at maintaining our mission for all students always, right? It, it's a reflection of our vision and our values and our strategic plan. And I think we're doing a pretty good job of that and our teachers right now, our team right now during this crisis is, well, frankly, doing a fantastic job. But that said, it's at this time for which we know there's going to be changes coming down the pipeline. That it's important that we understand our resources. We, we understand how and what resources we need to restrict. So administration, we're currently doing that because we know tomorrow, tomorrow is going to be a different day. I think we all understand where the economy is and where it's headed. I think we all understand where the state is headed. But we are certainly in a different place today, a much different place today than where we were just one, one month ago. Every day it seems like something new pops up, whether it's a proclamation from the governor or something from the State Board of Education. Meanwhile, there's been absolutely nothing proclaimed from a budgetary direction from the state. Yes, I think Governor Pritzker talked a little bit about some numbers yesterday and he has made one thing certainly clear is the budget that he presented. Well, just two months ago in February, well, that's off the table, right? We know things are going to change. I do want to provide the board with a few data points. Reflecting back in time because the state has certainly gone through these things in the past. In two thousand and one, we had a mini recession and the state revenue dropped about five point seven percent or about two billion dollars. In two thousand and eight, and a lot of us were around in two thousand eight, nine, ten timeframe, in two thousand and eight, we had a great recession. That decline was eleven percent or four point five billion dollars of state revenue. And at that time, approximately of that four point five billion, three point five billion, well, was taken from education. And we, at that time, we all lived through that. I think we cut six point six million dollars out of our two thousand nine, ten budget. You know, they cut transportation forty percent. They cut the foundation level. They took away early childhood, you know, or they cut the early childhood grant. They took away the ADA block grants. There was a lot, a lot of cuts at the state level. With regard to COVID nineteen and the current pandemic and Governor Pritzker hinted at these numbers yesterday. Right? COGFA, I'm not sure if you've heard of COGFA, but COGFA is the Commission on Government Forecasting and Accountability. And they've estimated in their worst case scenario with twenty percent reduction in state revenue, which is about eight billion dollars. And those numbers between the two calendar years that were referenced yesterday is about eight billion dollars. Tony, you said something?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So when we come back and when the legislators come back to budgetaring at the state level, whether that's in May, you know, hopefully it's in May, um, or it's during the summer and and they look at available resources, I think we all know based on these simple numbers that it is a completely heavy lift. We have heard, um, and the state has communicated that they will try to protect tier one and tier two districts uh, under the evidence-based funding formula. We are obviously a tier two, we're borderline, we just missed tier one. But they're gonna try to protect us as much as possible. And they'll start cutting from their tier three and tier four districts, but the fact of the matter is they haven't given a lot of money to the tier three and tier four districts the last several years. We do know, and I feel pretty confident, that the additional six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that we have in our budget today, that's not gonna be there tomorrow. But then the question really is, is it seven hundred thousand? Is it one point four million or is it two point one million? Or is it more? We don't know those answers, but but hopefully, you know, we're gonna, hopefully the state is gonna try to give us those answers sooner than later. Now I wanted to jump in to the financial implications. So you understand what the financial implications are for the current year. Uh, because, you know, the executive summary I previously talked about was February. When you see the March and you see the April and you see the May financial statement, you'll see some of these numbers starting to uh, maybe make a little more sense. So what I did was for revenues and expenses, and I only tried to look at material revenues and expenses. What were the financial impacts that we're seeing now and that, well, we could see um, in two thousand and twenty one? And and I wanted to start with property taxes because I think we've all heard that the counties are talking about, you know, waiving the penalty, allowing, um, property taxpayers in need, you know, possibly an additional ninety days without having to pay a penalty to do so. So knowing that, um, you know, that will seriously impact our cash flow moving forward. As a result of that, we've done a lot of different things. I've had conversations with Chapman and Cutler. I've had conversations with PMA and we've we've analyzed our cash flow. Uh, we understand that if we were not, if we were gonna not receive a single dollar in May, June, and July for that payment that's due June first, we would run out of cash in August or September, and we would be looking for short-term borrowings. We would look to a TAW or a line of credit. So, um, we we are looking into those things. We're getting ready just in case the county makes a decision that will, um, negatively, uh, impact us. Um, now that said, a lot of districts are doing the same thing that I'm doing, that we're doing. But the fact of the matter is, what we're also hearing from the counties is fifty percent of Kane County and sixty percent of McHenry County taxes are paid via escrow payments from banks. And banks have to make those payments. So at a minimum, we will receive at least fifty percent of the tax collections that we're expecting to receive. So we don't expect, yeah, we may have a cash, our cash flow may be impacted, but I don't think it's gonna be impacted to a point where we're gonna be in trouble. That being said, you have to know that it's a possibility. Impact fees. Uh, we know impact fees next year and this year may be impacted because the sales of new homes during this time, well, it's normally the busiest time of the year. I- is likely to decline. So we're working with the village to better understand what has been that decline so that we can kind of quantify and, uh, understand what that impact will be on our financial statements. Um, student fees, right? Um, now that students aren't participating in spring sports and spring clubs, we're proactively reimbursing athletic fees at the middle school and high school for all, uh, those types of fees. We're working with the clubs um, and a lot of events to reimburse, uh, families for the dollars that they spent on things that they can no longer partake in. Food services, this is kind of a big one because revenues and expenditures obviously are reduced. We're not taking in a good portion of revenue for for the sale of lunches, but it's also the sale of lunches that helps us cover the cost of that whole department, including the people in that department. So meanwhile, we've got expenses happening for which there's no incoming revenue, and we expect that to be about a two thousand dollar impact, two hundred thousand dollar impact to the district. Will it impact us next year? It all depends if if we start school on time and and we continue to operate as normal. We do think that, um, filings for free and reduced are likely to rise. And I don't wanna say that's a good thing, but if it does rise, we generally, you know, we'll see that on a positive side uh, on the national school lunch side. On the federal revenue side, interest revenue, right? We have declining interest rates as a result, and we we saw declining interest rates before this all started, but, um, they're declining a a little faster than they probably would have otherwise. State funding, we talked about state funding, national school lunch. Uh, typically on a monthly basis, we bring in sixty to seventy thousand dollars, um, for our free and reduced lunches that we do serve. Now, although we're not receiving that, we are receiving, you know, Dr. Rowe talked about the thousand lunches, five hundred breakfasts, five hundred uh, lunches that we are serving on a daily basis. That will bring in a good amount of revenue. But we're thinking it's gonna bring in between forty and fifty, not sixty to seventy. So we will see a little bit of a a decline there as well on the national school lunch, and and of course, that will impact us next year if filings for free and reduced increase. Medicaid services, right, we're we're not transporting kids. We're not, uh, providing as many services with the Act of God Day. So we do know that from Medicaid services standpoint, Medicaid income standpoint, we're gonna be impacted a little bit there. Title funds, this is kind of a victory, uh, in accordance with the CARES Act, in accordance, um, as a result of our low-income population. Uh, we are receiving or we're expected to receive a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars for use next year, um, as it relates to COVID nineteen, and that is coming under the title funds. Uh, we think the application process, the state is still dealing with this. Uh, we've heard the application process is about thirty days out still, so, uh, those funds will definitely more than likely carry into next year. On the expense side, we talked about health insurance, uh, contract custodial. We talked about that, substitute teachers. Obviously, with school not in session, uh, this is a favorability that that certainly we didn't expect. We're hoping this favorability offsets that food services, uh, unfavorability that we talked about earlier. Energy costs. Doug is doing a great job with energy right now. Unfortunately, it's at the cost of the pandemic, but certainly we're saving money from our budget on energy costs, and and we will quantify that over the next month or so to give the board a better idea as to where we think we're gonna end up. Capital projects, Doug talked a lot about what's going on because, well, as of now, most of those projects continue and remain on schedule. Um, will it impact us next year? You know, and that's something we will continue to look at. Transportation costs, certainly we're seeing reduced supplies and repairs as well as fuel cost. And maybe with the downturn in the economy and the continued downturn in the economy and declining oil prices, you know, that may actually provide some favorability within the budget for next year. Technology, um, I just wanted to make sure I covered most major departments here. Chris and his team, the technology team are doing, you know, we've got thirteen thousand devices and our kids are hammering on their Chromebooks every day. And I see the mobile techs here in the building every day, and they are doing a fabulous job getting our students the technology they they need, uh, to continue every day with e-learning. So, um, I think we have five hundred replacement Chromebooks go out in the last several weeks uh, for broken, uh, Chromebooks, and and the team just continues downstairs to do a great job with turning those around and keeping our our students going. No immediate impact on that line item other than while we're keeping them going, and and for some of our families, um, we had to provide them with hotspots. Um, and that was, uh, sixteen thousand dollars of additional money that was certainly, you know, uh, we had that money within the technology budget to do that. So wanted to share that as well. You know, next steps, next steps really is we're gonna continue over the next several months to to run a lot of different scenarios for the board as we've always done, uh, whether it's best case or worst case. Um, so that we can understand not only what FY twenty one looks like, so that we can understand what twenty two and twenty three and twenty four look like. You know, we continue to look internally, uh, what the impact is gonna be under COVID nineteen, and we'll we'll continue to do those things from a cash flow perspective. In the next week or so, we should hear back from the counties, Kane County as well as McHenry County is as to what direction they're going on the the waiver of the penalty. You know, I I do think it's something, uh, w- we support because, you know, we are a community. Um, it it does take a village, and, um, we've got a lot of small businesses out there that when they receive that tax bill, it it's gonna hurt, and they're probably not gonna be able to pay those tax bills. So providing them an opportunity to delay their payments is is definitely the right thing to do, but uh, we do have to understand that that impact to us, so we continue to do that. Do we need to implement short-term borrowings? No, but but we're gonna be ready. In fact, a- after talking to Chapman and Cutler and BMO, um, I do have a resolution, uh, being drafted for the board to approve just in case last minute we do need to do something. I don't like to say that, but that may be the case, so we're going down that path. We certainly don't have to run to liquidity yet, meaning, um, we don't have to cash out our CDs. Uh, we don't have to cash out our long-term investments at this time. Uh, but I have made a kind of a treasury decision when this all came out, where we're not gonna enter into any more long-term investments during this period of time. I'm keeping the money liquid. I don't wanna invest, um, you know, millions of dollars in a long-term um, investment at this point in time. It's just not the right thing to do. So we have done that. We filed for FEMA, right, the Federal Emergency, uh, Application, that that application was due by April twelfth. We're not sure if we're eligible for anything, but we filed for the application so that if we do become eligible and we receive anything, well, we've got the ball started on that. Um, like I said, we've, we continue to analyze our cash flow, uh, working with PMA under certain property tax scenarios. And we filed for additional food services grants. There's a few food service grants that for COVID nineteen that have become available. They're small, but we've applied for them, so hopefully we'll see some dollars there. And I did mention the, uh, the CARES, a hundred and eighty three thousand dollar title money. So you know, those are the things that are happening. You know, we will continue to bring a budget to the board. You know, probably monthly at this point so that we can look and make decisions as to where we need to go and the things we need to do to remain in good financial, uh, shape over the next several years. So stay tuned on that. But I would be happy to answer any questions, um, you guys might have.
Any questions?
I have none.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, thanks, Mr. Altmeier. That's very clear that, um, that isn't really something we could take action on because there are just too many variables with very wide assumptions that we just don't have the data for. So it wouldn't be prudent for us to approve anything at this time, in my opinion. I think everybody would agree. Is anybody have any thoughts on that?
Absolutely agree with you.
Yeah, at this point, really, you know, we're really in the hands of the state. You know, from a property tax standpoint, I think we'll be fine next year. Um, but it's, it really comes down to what's gonna happen at the state level uh, with the evidence-based formula, and how are they gonna balance their budget? And and maybe even more importantly, not only how are they gonna balance their budget, but is this gonna just be a one-year blip? Are we gonna get back to normal within a year? Um, or is this gonna be an ongoing, you know, is this gonna be lasting? That's the scary part. We don't know. So, thank you.
Okay, well, thanks. Thanks for that detail. Appreciate it. But you're not off the hook yet because I think we have a propane agreement to discuss. Eighteen point three point two point one.
Well, there's good news. This is good news. This is a good news item, actually. You know, fuel prices are down. We talked about that. Boy, propane is one of them. Uh, propane is at almost an all-time low right now. And so it's, it it doesn't get any better than this to enter into a long-term contract. We've been working with AmeriGas from day one. You know, we met with them six, nine months ago when we started entertaining, looking at propane. Um, they were there working with us to better understand what we need to do to make sure that we have fuel on these vehicles and and help us understand, you know, propane buses in general. So they have put together a contract for which is is attached. They had offered us a fixed or variable price contract for years one and two. But in looking, you know, administrations recommending going the fixed rate for years one and two because they can lock in up to twenty-four months out. And the fixed prices that they are, uh, quoting us are a dollar fourteen per gallon and a dollar fifteen per gallon in years one and two respectfully, respectfully. That said, I'm looking around here because I've got some data. Over the last four years, propane prices, retail wholesale propane, propane prices have been in two thousand seventeen, calendar year two thousand and seventeen, about a dollar sixty. Two thousand and eighteen, they were a dollar sixty-five to a dollar seventy. Um, they started to improve last year. Average price was about a dollar fifty. So going variable at this point in time, if prices go back up, we'd be back at the dollar fifty, dollar sixty, dollar seventy level. So we're, we're strongly recommending obviously, uh, locking in at the dollar fourteen, dollar fifteen rate for years one and two. And the contract that you have that's attached, um, we're still working. I'm, I've worked with the attorney on that contract. We have recommended changes to AmeriGas. Uh, they have yet to get us those changes back. So by the board approving this tonight, I don't want you to approve the contract. I really just want you to approve that you're okay with moving forward. I will, once I finalize the contract, I can bring that forward again, um, maybe as an informational item or if the board wants to approve it. But we do have to act, um, accordingly so that they could lock in those first two years. The language things I'm working with AmeriGas on in the contract on are your general contract language from term to y- you name it, right? It's things that they put in that we say, yeah, no. But we gotta take out. Um, so we're just really cleaning up the contract with them. They are also adding language that gives us a window of time. Maybe it's a three to six window of time every year after this two, one-year period so that we have the opportunity to lock in at a low uh, a low fixed rate rather than being, um, variable moving forward, which I think is beneficial because if propane prices remain low, just like we do with natural gas, we'll lock in. It'll be part of the contract language, and so that's, that's the one big piece they're adding to this contract. If you do recall, we talked about when we did the fourteen propane buses. AmeriGas was the only one. In fact, I'll be honest, I I've been working with three propane providers and two others are no longer calling me back because I think they know they can't compete with AmeriGas. They're too big. Um, and AmeriGas has a five thousand dollar per bus grant that they're providing school districts, um, in year one. So that's seventy thousand dollars to our school district, and I think after I had those conversations with, um, a few other propane providers, that's probably the reason they're not calling me back anymore. So that's also being written into the contract, um, and should have been, but is not part of that contract that is currently attached uh, to the memo that you have here. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but this is, uh, this is really gonna, this is gonna save us some money moving forward.
Yeah, no, no, no problem with the the thoughts, ideas. You get a couple of issues though with, I mean, again, I know you're not, you have to tell us exactly what you're wanting us to be approving here because the thing you got there, the second attachment that has the pricing and stuff, does it only good through April fifteenth?
Yeah, that's been changed. That's been changed to April twentieth. Okay. That was what, that was in the contract. That was one of the contract things that we were talking about. And they had all intentions of getting it to me today, but it's locked up in there. With this COVID nineteen, they're also all working remotely and they
Yeah, they're all scrambling. Yeah, okay. So we just gotta be careful or approving it. And then that second attached or the third attachment, the signer is Sky Harbor Parking.
Yeah, yeah, I know. That's not even us. Yeah, so I'm Yeah, so I'm open for recommendations on 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 how we can approve moving forward with doing business with AmeriGas at this point.
Mark, this is Paul.
Yeah.
Does this fall into the domain of the energy procurement steps that we take with gas and electricity?
Yeah, this is under the um, under the state code. This is an exception to the contract language of having to be bid. This does not have to be bid. It's just like natural gas. Uh, we can move forward uh without, obviously, you know, I did my due diligence and I reached out to numerous providers, but we also want a local provider um that could could be there for us. But this is a contractual exception, if that's what you're asking.
No, the the question is because I act as the board liaison for the other two energy sources, is that something that could be of use in this area as well?
I I think it's a little different process. Um, I'm not as involved as you and or Mr. Rancasic is for natural gas, but um, this is maybe a little more contractual than that process. I'm not sure, Doug, what what are your thoughts on that? I don't know if I can answer that, Paul.
And that's okay. I'm just trying to think a little bit, you know, broadly here um, in in light of what's uh in front of us.
There are some disconnects between uh propane and natural gas cost. There was a spike five to seven years ago in the propane industry um that did not correlate with natural gas. I that's all I know. I don't know a lot about that business.
And I think it's a different type of purchasing and contracting. I don't. I don't know.
All right, well, my question is, what what are they? What are they gonna be okay? Okay, if their pricing is good through April twentieth, they must be expecting us to approve something tonight.
Yes, and yes, they are. And it is good through April twentieth. So I, so we we can have uh, you know, we can have an approval to move forward with AmeriGas of uh approving the first two years of the the contract is noted. And next month I can bring the final contract to the board for approval. And like I said, the things.
I mean, I did, that's okay.
Contract.
Yeah, and and that would be okay. It it, I mean, it would, this wouldn't be the final contract we're approving. This is, we're approving you entering in, you know, uh, in into an agreement and and constructing uh agreements uh to be signed and approved at 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 the next board meeting. But yeah, under these, under the terms that are showing up here.
Yes.
Okay, do perhaps to to make sure we know what we're agreeing to, maybe we should craft the motion to expressly state what those fixed prices are. Do you think?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, you should. You.
I don't wanna get them wrong either, uh, Mr. Altmeier. So what what exactly? It's the same price for both years?
No, year one fixed is uh one point one four five, one point one four five. Year one, year year two.
Two, one point one five, one point one five five.
Yeah, one penny more.
Okay, per gallon.
Per gallon.
Okay.
In accordance with the contract dated April tenth.
Okay.
All right. In accordance with the, in accordance with the draft of the contract dated.
The draft proposal, because really that's all in the proposal. Well, it's also in the contract as well, but.
Okay. Well, we'll we'll see how it goes with the vote. Thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
That being said, I will try and make a motion here. See, I've lost my gen- agenda um to approve the contract uh for the propane agreement with um. So is this AmeriGas?
AmeriGas.
Okay, AmeriGas. As stated in the draft contract dated April tenth for year one of one point one four five dollars per gallon and year two at a rate of one point one five five dollars per gallon.
Yeah, second.
Second from Mr. Quagliano. Is there any discussion before we vote? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Altmeier. Okay, moving on to building and grounds, uh, we have uh pavement improvements. Take a a motion to, well, let's, you know, we didn't have a, we didn't have a committee of the whole on this. Is there any questions on this, on this bid packet? Okay. Then I will make a motion to approve uh bid number twenty twenty dash nineteen as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Hi Reno?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Eighteen point four point two refuse and recycle services contract extension. Mr. Rancasic, is there anything that you can summarize on this?
I will tell you that uh they started with a much higher figure for the increase um based on the fact that the the cost of recycled materials, there is no value any longer because of recent tariff wars with China. So they're actually uh talking about out of pocket and I independently confirmed that before talking to them even by listening to all my peers talk about the challenges with their refuse and recycling contracts right now. And um, so I was concerned when I had to talk to them about negotiation. We got them back down to uh within our uh CPI PTL limit uh for the years increase, which is compliance with our contract language uh for one year. Uh, and I think it's a great uh move because our second low bid, uh, the last time we bid this few years ago was actually five percent higher than their contract rate. So we're still getting a good price.
Very good. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
He died?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm just, th- this is the cost for the whole district for the whole year?
I'm sorry, that's a per month cost.
All right.
That's, oh, it says annual.
Yeah, 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 okay, I got it.
I am my bad. I am sorry, that is an error. That is a monthly cost.
Yeah, okay. It's it's fine. I'll explain one of these days why I asked that question. It didn't really pertain to this necessarily, but okay.
Based on that, is there any further discussion? Okay, so with that, and thank you, Mr. Quagliano, for catching that. Make a motion to approve the uh recycling uh contract extension as presented in the motion and that is a monthly rate.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Troy. Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Uh, eighteen point four point three change order twenty six for the Fine Arts Edition. Anything you need to add to this, Mr. Mr. Rancasic?
During the design of the uh high school addition, it was determined that the appropriate HVAC systems uh to serve the new uh band room, expanded band room in the black box uh needed to be rooftop units. Uh, and when that design went on the board, Wold told us that there needed to be uh extensions of the perimeter walls up uh high enough to screen uh them from being visible. So I advised them that these uh that they need to be very careful to position these units on those roof areas such that the uh there was clearance for us to maintain and repair these units to uh slide coils and crane motors out of the sides of them to open the cabinet doors completely. When we got, when the roof was done, Lamp came back down off the roof with the mechanical contractor and said, whoops. Uh, we just checked the layout on this thing where it's installed and uh some of the doors on the rooftop unit will only be able to open forty five degrees, which means we couldn't even get a filter in. Um, and so Wold, when they recognized that they made an error, said they would take care of this expense. But uh, the principal over there, Roger, did call me and talk to me and he says he thought it was in the best interest of the school district uh to recognize change orders to the contracts with the contractors uh to preserve our, preserve our rights for warranty and performance bond. Um, and that Wold would make us whole for these expenses. Uh, we have since got back to Wold and says we expect these expenses to be immediately removed from uh their fee for this particular project to keep the overall cost of the project down. They had no contest with that. They were fine with it. The uh prices, uh, there was a price negotiated and everybody thought it was correct. Then the contractor submitted a a little cut sheet uh to show how the trend, this transition curve would be built on the roof that would allow uh the existing roof opening to be used and just offset the unit from there and raise it up a little higher and the duck work would have a little transition inside down into that, the building envelope. And in fact, it was a little wrong. So unfortunately, I could last minute got a revised price which was put into the packet as revision number one of the memo. So that is the one for the for the board to focus on tonight, please. I apologize for that. But there's a little extra roofing. Uh, the transition curb cost uh went up a little bit. Uh, but Lamp is saying this price is the most it will be. Now they're gonna go through the next step of another submittal to look at uh to see if everything is correct. If everybody agrees, the mechanical engineer and the commissioning agent agree with the contractor that this is functional. But uh, if we don't get this ordered, we're actually gonna probably put the uh project on hold for about thirty days. So we're asking for the board's position uh of course, uh to approve, authorize the district to approve a negotiated price uh for this change order that should be in this ballpark of price at this time. We'll bring back to the board later. Uh, the net result really is though, we're not gonna experience any out of pocket costs for this and the overall cost of the project.
Hey, any questions or comments on that? Alrighty, thank you very much. Let's uh let's find where I was here. Okay, uh, I will make a motion to uh approve change order number twenty six for the Huntley High School Fine Arts Edition as presented in the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Troy. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes, okay, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rancasic. Okay, let's move on to the curriculum committee. Science review, Dr. Slichter, eighteen point five point one.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so these next two items actually uh, they're they're a little bit impacted by our our situation because these are some of these items that you would get to hear as a big celebration. You'd get to hear from credit going to Mr. Johnson uh and Mrs. Fuer, the department chair for science at the high school, along with really dedicated team of teachers would normally be presenting this to you. Um, so we will look forward to bringing in an awesome academic spotlight next year, uh, letting you know how it's going. But essentially what we've done during the course of this year is um, for the secondary level, uh, we've reviewed our science standards and our science curriculum. Now, the great thing about where we are right now is that this is actually the second review cycle now with the next generation science standards. So just prior to um about seven years ago is when a uh of the first science review was launched. The standards were brand new, districts were all working them out. So now we've been able to really hone down our focus toward instruction. So I'm just gonna mention sort of a key couple of highlights and and what we've got here. It was a fairly standard review process, but the thing that we find so exciting is we've really been able to dig in on the inquiry process. And if you recall from our social studies presentations with our new social studies curriculum last year and even our elementary explore class, our uh project lead the way, we're really focusing on that inquiry design process across all of our subjects. And so this was our chance to do that for science. Very, very deep professional learning for all science teachers on the front end of the review. And um emerging now with that professional learning with standards, you can see the curriculum is is in the packet. Clearly, there's, there's more, there's pacing guides, things that teachers will be using, but our fundamental standards, how those are broken down and then the materials are also included. Now, from the perspective of board approval, um, there would be the two pieces that need approval. One would be the curriculum, which would be the the standards in those curriculum maps. And the second would be the materials, which we typically put on display for thirty days and in accordance with the school code, so that would bring us to approval in May. We would not need to approve that tonight. The only piece that I would want to mention uh real specifically is that I'm very, very proud of how they went about their material selection. We've continued to say as we've gone along that it's not about the materials, it's about the curriculum, it's about the instruction, it's about what our students are learning. So they really dug in on the materials. For the middle school, the Amplify Science curriculum, that's really number one in the nation. Those materials are, in fact, it's endorsed as number one by Digital Promise League of Innovative Schools, which, as you know, we are a part of that. Um, so we are very, very confident that the materials are gonna support very, very well that inquiry process. The last little piece I will make just a point of is that in the high school, um, as they dug in on materials for chemistry, um, the materials that they found to be the most progressive and would fit their needs the best are the Pearson materials that are listed here on this list. However, the Pearson materials are just finishing being developed. So we let Pearson know that we would not be purchasing materials that were just finishing being developed, but they will be giving those to us free of cost as a pilot for next year. Uh, the chemistry teachers, when we went back repeatedly to see, would they want a different material? Would they want something else supplemental? And they did keep coming back to that Pearson material. And so um, we just, we just wouldn't be purchasing that for next year. We would be piloting it, um, making sure that it was ready to go before we made a purchase. But essentially, it's it's the standard of standard. That's how we look at our curriculum. Those are, those are from the state, those are the next gen standards and it's how we instruct, how we do our professional learning and what our kids are learning. So uh, we are excited to to rule that out for next year and um to bring you a spotlight where you do get to hear from Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Fuer and all the teachers who put so much work into this. Um, and with that, I will take any questions.
Okay, any questions from the committee first?
Oh. Not here. Nope.
Okay. Uh, very good. Now, this is this, I think, uh, Dr. Slichter, this is just a recommendation to move it forward to the next board meeting. Is that correct?
Correct. These will need to be on display for thirty days. And just like we always say, that's a little bit of antiquated language in school code because it's a, it's a link, right? So we're not gonna be displaying a link, but any member of the public that wishes to review them can contact us and we can make um a sample link available to them.
Okay, so there's no board action today?
No board action tonight. We'll, you'll be seeing that back again just as a an action item uh if we have a consent agenda in May.
Okay, thank you. All right. That will move on to the next item, eighteen point five point two PE and health review, Dr. Slichter.
All right, thank you. Uh, this is another one. This would be presented, actually, it was a great collaborative effort between uh Mr. Johnson at six twelve, Dr. McCrendle at K five, and then actually Mrs. Romero on the SEL side on charge of social emotional learning. Um, this is an extremely exciting PE and health um approach. And what I'm gonna say is that this review, this is why I can't wait for you to hear that spotlight next year because you need to hear from the teachers on this. This approach is actually going to bring us toward into competency based learning. This will put PE and health really at the vanguard or at the forefront of using data to make competency based instructional decisions. And the teachers are so excited about it. It's also going to form the basis of our tier one or our core curriculum for six twelve uh with social emotional learning. And again, it was the teachers and their passion for that, saying every student has PE across middle school and high school, right? And so that's a great place for it, that they really wanted to expand their vision of of PE and health. So a couple. So a couple highlights there. Again, it was a fairly typical review process and you've heard me talk about those processes over the years. Um, but some of the pieces that emerged from that, that we're really, really proud of is, um, you can see in there, the curriculum is captured in competencies. And that's a very specific word that we're using because students will be able to progress based on their mastery of those competencies. Um, the other piece that we want to just highlight is how we are linking physical fitness and social emotional learning. So one component that you'll see in the materials uh, relates to heart rate monitors. And these, this is a heart rate monitor company. We, we reviewed a couple of different ones. There really is so much more than the heart rate monitors. So what those monitors can do is clearly just the same physical pieces that a current heart rate monitors would do. But they also have the opportunity to give students biofeedback in their wristwatches so that the students could check those out. So potentially we see some very strong applications to where if students are needing to become aware of, say, for example, something I ate and what it does to my heart rate or how it makes me feel, or I'm feeling anxious, what's that doing to me physically? That students, we could start building in some linkages between some of those um, social emotional learning components that we know students need as well as the physical components that they'd be working on, setting data-based physical fitness goals and so forth. Um, the last piece that we're super excited about, and this is a piece that would also need to be on display for the thirty days for folks to investigate is um, a social emotional learning curriculum uh, out of Yale University. It's called Ruler and you'll see that in the appendix uh, E that has the um, materials. Uh, so that will be in our health and PE classes and it stands for recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing and regulating emotion. Um, our, our teachers went and viewed this in action in Hinsdale and they were just blown away by what students were able to do. So this curriculum would be infused through PE and through health as a baseline social emotional learning curriculum. Um, it involves some, some deep professional learning, some train the trainer model. So um, when we adopt this, what we would be doing, well, initially the plan was to send some teachers to Yale University for training. In June, we won't be doing that now. Um, but we're looking at a blended model, uh, and potentially doing that, train the trainer of about five staff members who would travel and would get that deep training and bring that back to the, the rest, um, combined with a blended approach online. And, and that would be rolled out not for next year but for the year after. So we would start infusing pieces during this next year of that ruler curriculum, but needing that deep training uh, would be for the following year. So those are just, again, a couple of highlights. Um, but this is, this is a cutting-edge PE and health curriculum that um, I think is just, I'm just so proud of, of the teams that moved this forward, uh, in the way that they thought about this in, in a really, really deep way. On the agenda, it does say it's for action tonight. It's actually not. We would want to have that on, on review um, for thirty days. So this would also be brought forward in May. That, I will take any questions.
Okay, any, any committee member questions?
Oh, just kind of a generic question overall around kind of the integration of technology and the impacts on, on the person. It feels like that's a very kind of science-heavy topic as well as PE. Is there, like, how do you, how do you get that? Is there almost like a more instruction-based element to the curriculum beyond like a phys ed or typical even health curriculum would be like, how, how is that handled?
So for the first piece of it, it wouldn't be as deep as like a biology class would. So prob, it probably could go, to be honest, but really the use of these tools at the outset would really be more around some of our baseline, either social emotional kind of biofeedback on feelings, anxiety, what's that doing? Or just what you would find in a health class around nutrition, like for example, and you know, some of the examples that the teachers explored are probably all of us know, right? There's certain like really sugary foods that really do impact the way we feel. And to have that biofeedback that would show us what those were um, would help us with that health side. So that would really be what we were attacking first. It's potentially could have deeper implications though. You're right about that.
Yeah, it just, I'm just intrigued by the idea of the um, emotional connection to the physical aspect of either nutrition or activity and that type of thing. And I think that's a um, great topic to explore and uh, build on.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunity for growth in that area. And also that was actually what really intrigued us about these particular tools. Um, the other piece that actually is kind of neat about this is that because we would be checking these instruments out to students, uh, it could really allow for a blended approach. So if we wanted to expand that just beyond what's happening in a classroom, we would be able to check those out. Students could use that throughout the day at different points. Tracking that same piece that you were talking about, Mr. Gentry, which is that either emotion, anxiety, how am I feeling in different classes, that kind of thing.
Okay, great.
I have a question though. The, the data, is that being collected and stored? Like, is there any kind of, I mean, what's being done to protect? You know, a student's uh, data about what they're feeling and experiencing? Or is this just something that they, they get in the moment? Are they tracking this and is that being?
They would track it in the moment. So we, that's a great question. So we would not be collecting it, nor would we be necess, we wouldn't honestly be tracking what they're feeling or what those other components were. But it would be more of a self-reflective piece. In terms of the data security, I think Dr. Bzinski, you had, had looked at this a little bit. Mr. Johnson had showed me some um, correspondence and thoughts that you had on that. Did you have anything else you would want to add to that?
No, it does seem as there, there's some, i- if I'm remembering the system correctly, we looked at a couple of different things, but there was some um, web-based or cloud-based storage of, of historical trend type data. It's not the, the all-encompassing, everything that the student's feeling and that sort of stuff, but there was some if I'm remembering correctly, some historical statistical tracking of data. Um, but in reviewing their systems, truly we didn't have any major concerns over how that data was stored. Um, at this point, the district has a fair amount of data um, in, in cloud storage for a, a period of different systems. This one is, is set up is very much similar to those.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure this wasn't something that like became part of their, you know, record or anything that's.
Absolutely, yeah. Very fair question. I'm glad you asked it. Absolutely not, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we will, uh, as the science review, we will move this forward uh, for the next board meeting. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, eighteen point five point three, Ombudsman Contract, Dr. Slichter.
Yes, and this will look familiar to you. As you know, several years ago, we implemented our alternative school and we did that by contracting with Ombudsman Educational Services. This past year, uh, we started out with actually a two and a half year contract because if you recall, we started in January of the first year. Uh, this past year, we've been operating, or this year, we've been operating on a one-year extension of that two and a half year contract. And we are looking for next year just to do an additional one-year extension. So exact same contract, uh, very, very uh, straightforward. The funds are in the budget and what we do is we, we do fund locally the bulk of the contract. And then we do budget in our Title I grant for some additional seats if we have students with additional needs that we would want to add beyond uh, the base number of students in the contract. Uh, so this would be for approval tonight. Uh, again, very standard, just to extend our alternative school for an additional year for students. Uh, take any questions?
Just how many people um, took advantage of this last year or this current year, wherever we are?
Yeah, total, we have about, it comes and goes a little bit because sometimes a student will go in and then graduate, but generally it's about thirty is our, is our standard. And sometimes we'll end up with even up to about thirty-five students. Um, there's always, I will be frank and say there's always more seats than, or more students than the number of seats that we have. So we're definitely, we definitely work with our especially high school. We sometimes have middle school students in there, but especially our high school counselors with um, Ms. Lekewitz, social workers to see where the, the most, the strongest needs are for those seats.
Thank you.
How does this, uh, contract rate compare to the, the last renewal or the last, or initial contract?
Identical.
Okay.
We did work out, I'll, I'll tell you on the first, um, after the first contract, so coming into this year, we actually worked out a few details just with regard to um, you know, student services and some details like that, but this one's identical to the one we've been using this year. And um, we've had a good productive relationship this year. We've worked through some of the early hiccups and um, I'm confident with this one going forward.
Good. Any, uh, any other questions? Okay, uh, well then I will make a motion to uh, approve the Ombudsman Contract Extension as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Second from Mr. Garen. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes, that motion carries. Uh, next item is the Business Accelerator Contract. Back to Dr. Slichter.
Yeah, this is the, the last one. This one is also very straightforward. So as you know, we have our business incubator that we launched this year, great success. A lot of, we've seen our students present. Uh, and what we did approve, uh, the board approved as a new course for next year is the Business Accelerator, which is that second level. This is just simply a standard contract, uh, in order to run the Business Accelerator. As you see, it's a fairly low dollar amount and that is in the budget. Uh, and this contract will allow us to run the Business Accelerator, very similar to the current one that we have for Business Incubator. With that, I will take any questions?
Any questions on this one? All right, then I'll make a motion to approve the Business Accelerator Contract as presented in the agenda.
Second.
I think, uh, Ms. Melendi got that one. Um, let's have a roll call.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Slichter. And with that, we'll move on to eighteen point five point five, uh, Ms. Lombard, IESA Membership Renewal.
Yeah, so these next two items are just our annual renewals. The first one is for our middle school, uh, extracurricular, um, athletic and scholastic events that we participate in. And what you'll see there are the fees um, for next school year for those uh, state-level activities that we do um, participate in. And those would be um, approving that membership now. And then there are certain deadlines that uh, those fees would be paid um, prior to the um, participation in those events. So again, this is just that uh, annual renewal um, of the IESA.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Pretty standard. We do this every year. Okay, with that, I will make a motion to approve the IESA Membership Renewal as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Garen. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, next item, eighteen point five point six, Ms. Lombard, the IHSA Annual Renewal.
Yeah, so again, the annual renewal, uh, this one does need to be um, signed and submitted prior to um, June. And so again, this is just stating that Huntley High School um, will be participating in the IHSA and uh, kind of following all their guidelines and rules and, and whatnot. So that attachment would be that membership um, agreement.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, very good. Um, I will make a motion to approve the IHSA Annual Renewal as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Garen. Roll call.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to eighteen point six, uh, number of policy uh, items, starting with eighteen point six point one, we have a press update. Uh, Dr. Rowe.
Uh, sure thing. The press update is a very straightforward and, and very brief one. The, the lone highlight uh, to point out is just ISB's separation from, um, from the park, uh, park assessment. Otherwise, everything is basically a footnote and some legal updates.
Okay, and uh, this is listed as a voice call. I think that's correct. Is that? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve uh, press update as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, no, no opposition. Uh, motion carries. Uh, eighteen point six point two, Policy Update, Mr. Altmeier.
This is the, uh, this is the, the item that Mr. Altmeier presented earlier in the meeting that would change the uh, the obligation to bring uh, bidding process forward towards the board to, from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollar minimum.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was struggling to unmute myself here. But uh, yeah, it's the exact same thing we discussed earlier.
Okay, any questions or comments on this?
It's a long road to retirement on this uh, particular policy. Remember the beginning.
Yeah, all right. Okay, um, with that, I will make a motion to approve the uh, policy update regarding uh, purchases and contracts as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Uh, eighteen point six point three, Policy Addition Regarding Emergency Powers of the Superintendent as, as recommended by District's Legal Counsel. Dr. Rose, there anything more you want to add to this?
Uh, no, sir, nothing more.
Okay, any questions or comments on it? All right, I'll make a motion to approve that uh, policy regarding emergency powers as presented. There's second. Second from Ms. Melendi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eighteen point six point four, uh, Resolution Regarding Emergency Suspension um, of Policy. Uh, as uh, previously discussed, is there anything more to add on this, Dr. Rowe?
Uh, nothing further.
Okay, is there any questions or comments on it from the board? All right, I will make a motion to uh, uh, approve uh, Resolution twenty twenty point oh four point one six Regarding Emergency Suspension of Policy Due to the COVID Pandemic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Garen. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Uh, last item under uh, section eighteen, Policy Update. Um, Press Policy Packet Second Reading. Dr. Rowe, anything you want to state about this?
Uh, there's nothing further to add here. As, as, as you said, Mr. Fleck, this is the second reading. So um, this is for everything you've reviewed previously, just passing it forward uh, one more time.
Okay, this is ready for a voice call. Any questions or comments on it from the board? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Policy Update as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Garen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Uh, uh, item nineteen, Public Comment. Um, Dr. Bzinski, were we able to get anybody uh, back here for public comment?
Uh, we reached out to that individual and um, invited them back. I have not seen anybody having returned or anybody currently requesting any public comment.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mr. Armstrong, if you're available, is there any other public comment?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, with that, then we will move on to item twenty. It is nine twenty-nine. I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Millen, a spirited second from Ms.
Exactly, geez.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody want to stick around, say nay? Okay, well, thank you all for uh, a very, uh, very involved meeting. I appreciate. Okay, well, thank you all for, uh, a very, uh, very involved meeting. I appreciate your time and, uh, we are adjourned.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Good night. See you all.
Good night.
Bye.